Good evening and welcome to the Seal Beach Planning Commission Meeting of September 8th, 2015. Undoubtedly one of the hottest days in Seal Beach on record. I heard it was 100 degrees today in town.
It's hotter than when we were.
The meeting will now come to order. Um, Commissioner Campbell, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America. The Statue of the Republic, for what we should stand as, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there a change to the calendar tonight?
There are no changes.
Then, if there are no objections, the agenda stands as presented, and we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public are invited to address the Planning Commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the podium and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes each. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we will close oral communications. There's one item on the consent calendar tonight, and that is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 20th, 2015. Since we need a minimum of three votes to pass this and approve the meeting minutes, I viewed the video myself since I wasn't present at the meeting last time. So I, uh, I think I'm able to vote tonight, and I'll have to abstain.
That's correct.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Please vote. The vote is three in favor. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. Thank you. New business. The first order of business is a minor use permit 15-11. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you Chairman and fellow commissioners. Tonight we will be looking at item two, which is at 629 South Shore Drive for minor use permit 1511 to allow an interior remodel involving rearranging the layouts of an existing kitchen, two bathrooms, and alterations of the front entry door at a non-conforming property. The property is located, um, on the west side of South Shore Drive. It is surrounded by residential units in the RLD 9 zoning district. The site is non-conforming due to the front yard setbacks. The front of the house is built at approximately a little over 15 feet, and the required setback for that district is actually 18 feet. This is the front of the residence. There's not a lot of exterior changes that are going to be, um, done. They are removing the double doors and putting in one single door, and they are replacing two windows on the exterior of this, um, uh, single-story residence. This is the site plan. No additions of additional square footage will be done to this site. As you can see on the proposed elevations, right here on the front elevation, this window will be changed out, and as I said, the double doors will be into a single door. Uh, and there will also be a window that's changed out on one of the side windows. The existing floor plan, um, will not change very much. The foyer will change a little bit. They'll be reducing one of the walls. The kitchen will be, um, expanded over into this area, where it's kind of a horseshoe type of shape now. They'll have an island and an L-shaped counter area. And the bathrooms here will be, um, remodeled. We did not receive any correspondence from, um, the public regarding this item. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have one comment. It says here the subject property is rectangular in shape with a lot area of approximately 2933 square feet. The property is approximately 51 feet wide by a hundred foot, 100 feet deep. Wouldn't that make the lot 5100 square feet?
Yes, that must have been an error typo.
Okay. Does that mean that the house take up 2900 square feet of that lot?
Let's see. The total house is 2,389 square feet.
Oh, 2,300?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, up in College Park East, homes are not to exceed 45% lot coverage. Because of that, two of the models had a real problem from day one and had to be legalized by the city. Does the Hill have such a restriction?
That is correct.
You're not supposed to exceed 45% lot coverage?
45%.
Okay. Because when I first looked at this, I thought 4,900 square feet on a 5,100 square foot lot, that's exceeding 45% lot coverage. That's why I didn't know if they had the same restrictions on the Hill that we have.
Yes, they do. This would also cover that, this minor use permit would also cover that. Um, they would not be able to add any habitable exterior square footage out, but in the future, if they wanted to go to the...
They want to go up, they can go up.
If they could go up, they could go up.
Yeah, I know, I think there's a limit that's probably set on how much square footage they could add for a second story.
I don't think we have a, the city does not have a floor-area ratio.
Yeah, they do. In College Park East, they do. If you've got a, we had two stories that were, two homes that were considered illegal that exceeded 45% lot coverage. And one of the homes, Columbia, I think, was 2,600 square feet. And if they want to go up to a second story, they cannot double deck the house. They have, they can only add so much.
Correct.
And if you add another bedroom, you gotta add another garage. So that kind of squashes everything right there.
Correct. Up to, once you go up to five, over five bedrooms, then you have to add another garage.
Mm-hmm.
The footprint and the square footage are not changing on this house, so is that correct?
They are not changing.
All right. Uh, I have one comment. The, uh, the analysis says that the setback is 15 feet 6 inches, but the drawing says 15 4, I believe. Can we figure out which is correct and make that consistent?
Can you identify which drawing you're talking about?
He's looking at page A1.
How are you reading that?
The applicant, the applicant indicates that the, um, correct measurement is 15 4.
So, so you will correct the... Recommendation?
Yes, we will correct that.
When there's a motion, can you also correct the typo in the resolution in recital B, section 3, on the square footage?
Where is that?
That's the 2933 square feet.
In the last picture, the front elevation indicates that there's a two-story in the back. Is that just a high vaulted ceiling?
Yes. That's the family room ceiling, correct?
That's what I was, I was asking about. Is that...
It looks like there's stairs on the plan from the family room.
The applicant is, is here, right?
There is a, there is a loft that goes up from the, um, from the first floor up to the second floor, right behind the garage.
Okay. Okay, so that's a second floor? Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused here. On section 3B, page 1 of 4, Resolution 15-20, there's a problem with that statement right there that the subject property is rectangular in shape with a lot area of approximately 2933 square feet?
That's correct. The lot area for this property is actually 5,100 square feet.
Thank you. So there are two changes that need to be made. Section 3, paragraph B, and, uh, the setback is in some 15 feet 4 inches in the analysis. Is that right?
That is correct.
Do you have any other questions of the staff? Would the applicant like to make any comments? You're not required to, but you're certainly welcome to. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Nice plan. Is it, is it your plan? Nice plan. I like what you're doing with the bathrooms.
You're gonna have to do all your laundry in the garage and all that. Okay. Do we have a motion? Um, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak from the audience on this matter? Seeing none, we will close public testimony on this and take a vote. Do we have a motion?
So moved, proposal?
Second?
Please vote. The vote is three in favor. The motion carries, and the permit is approved. Good luck.
And there is a 10-day appeal period? If anybody were to appeal this, and it starts running tomorrow?
The second item, the second new business item tonight is minor use permit 15-12. And we have the staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman. Item 3 here is at 127 Fifth Street for minor use permit 15-12 to request to allow an interior remodel involving relocating the kitchen, eliminating one bedroom, and adding a new study or office space within a non-conforming single-family residence. This is located in RHD 20, Old Town, on the west side of Fifth Street, near Central Way. It is surrounded by, um, residential units. The subject site is a single-family residence with a detached garage. The detached garage, which is located right here on the site plan, is approximately one foot away from the property line, thus making this property legal non-conforming due to the setback area. This structure will not be altered. All of the remodel will be proposed within the dwelling unit. The kitchen itself is currently near the rear of the property. It will be moved up to the front, eliminating, um, one bedroom. And then the area where the kitchen is existing will become a new office/study space towards the rear of the property. We'll also have a new door here at the rear of the property and a new door here off to the side entering into the kitchen from the side of the property. We have not received any correspondence from, uh, any residents or anybody, um, in the neighborhood. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions? Is the applicant here tonight?
No, they are not.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue?
Good evening all. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Mike Beube. I'm just simply here to speak in favor of this, um, of this permit. Uh, I'm just glad, I'm, I'm glad that there are people that want to move into town and keep one-story houses over to two-story houses. If you had the chance to walk around Old Town tonight and see the clouds, you'd understand why having, you know, fewer high stories is important. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mike is a neighbor that lives two doors down from this site.
Very good. Any comments? Are we entertaining a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Please vote. The vote is three in favor. The motion carries, and the permit is approved. The final item tonight is a public hearing item. Zone text amendment 15-1. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. For the past several months, staff has been surveying other cities with similar geographic characteristics that have incorporated entertainment provisions into their municipal codes. And we have been coordinating with the city attorney's office to create an administrative review and approval process that would allow entertainment in conjunction with an existing business. Staff has prepared an ordinance that we presented to the city council on September 28th. The ordinance establishes an administrative procedure that was focused on providing a balance between the needs of the business community and shielding residents from any impacts. Research and preparation of the ordinance showed that an entertainment permit can be evaluated more efficiently at the administrative level, and an administrative process offers flexibility when analyzing each case submitted by an applicant with unique entertainment requests. Similarly, an administrative process allows for quicker response to complaints when evidence is provided for code enforcement, involvement, or revocation of such permit. A new chapter will be created in the municipal code section that addresses entertainment and issuance of a permit through an administrative procedure. Since the current zoning ordinance prohibits amplified entertainment and also requires a conditional use permit for unamplified entertainment, staff has prepared the attached draft ordinance that recommends elimination of certain provisions that will conflict with the new ordinance. And this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. Go ahead. I just wondered who was notified of this, uh, business in some way? Because I, I assumed there would be some people in the audience, and there are. So was there any general notification that went out indicating we'd be taking action on this tonight?
There was a publication that was, um, published in the paper. Um, the original applicant had been notified, Taco Surf. They had been the ones to initiate the application and the amendment. Um, they had been notified that there was a meeting tonight. I believe their concern seems to be more focused on what the new ordinance, what the new regulations will be, as opposed to deleting the existing regulations. Okay?
When the new ordinances are ready, is that something that will come before us? Or will it only go before the city council?
It will only go before the city council, uh, because it's not being introduced into the zoning code.
Okay. That's what I assumed, but I... Thank you.
Okay, I have questions. Um, this new ordinance will repeal the old ordinance or essentially gut it in favor of a new one. Right now, the subject of amplified music comes under the existing zoning court, zoning code. This new ordinance will change that. It will take the decision away from the Planning Commission where there are public hearings and give it to a staff person where there will be no public hearings. Uh, my question is like, how will the residents around the area in question be notified? Will they even be notified? If so, uh, any change in the timeframe for notifications? And what avenues for redress will there be for the residents in the surrounding area? Um, you don't go into any detail on what the new administrative process will be. Who will be administering this new process? You want to transfer regulation to a more streamlined permit process and balance the needs of the business community with those of nearby residents? How will this be done without a public hearing and input from the community? Uh, an entertainment permit can be evaluated, your quote here, an entertainment permit can be evaluated more efficiently at the administrative level and through the zoning process. How? And how will that be more efficient? So I have some questions. Okay? I'll start all over again. How will the residents around the area in question be notified? Since this is taking away from the Planning Commission and is putting it in the hand of a staff person.
Can I interrupt for just a second? Um, is, is the, when the draft ordinance is prepared, will that go before the public?
Yes, that will be a public hearing item presented to the city council. And at the moment, it is scheduled for the September 28th meeting, which is why we couldn't go into very much detail, um, in this presentation, because it's something that has to be presented to the council and it's not scheduled for the next council meeting. It's the following. Once all of the agenda items are prepared for that meeting, it'll be available to the public so that everyone can take a look at it. If we wanted to go down the list of, of questions, we can definitely do that and we can try to address them as best as possible. Okay?
And we can continue with that if you'd like. I just want to make sure that the public will have input to this process. Is, is, is staff soliciting input from the businesses and residences concerning this issue now?
Um, I did not have direct involvement. My understanding is that staff did reach out to certain businesses and people have been contacting the department with regard to what they see, um, or what they would like to see. Uh, but again, staff has definitely been working very closely with the city attorney's office and also monitoring what has been occurring in other cities with, uh, similar characteristics to ours and seeing how it has worked there, what problems have arisen, and how we would be able to address those.
Both residences and businesses will be, will have the opportunity to, to request changes to this ordinance on the 28th.
It will be a public hearing item, absolutely. So everyone will have the opportunity to speak on that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to continue with that?
Uh, a question. How will the residents even know somebody has applied and that the staff is, is going to, uh, be making a decision on this?
The ordinance will still require a 500-foot radius notification for any new application. It won't be a public hearing matter, which means we can hold a meeting sooner, but we still will send out, um, notifications to anybody within 500 feet, which is what was being done for a conditional...
Okay, you're gonna send them a notification. Then will, will there be a public hearing?
There will be a public meeting, not...
Public meeting?
Right, not a hearing, which cuts down the notification time and allows the process to move further.
I'm not comfortable with that. Um, what avenues for redress will the residents have if they are not happy? Right now, if somebody comes forward, they come here, there's a democratic process, they get up and they speak, and we make a decision. That's gonna go away. And all that's gonna go in the hands of one person who's gonna have a meeting. Going to create what an entertainment czar? I had a real problem with that. Historically, historically, the people in this community who back up to Main Street have some significant, real concerns. Uh, we see it over and over and over and over. And their only chance for redress is to come to these chambers. And you're taking one step of that away from them. And I have a problem with that.
The ordinance, I believe, will still allow for residents to appeal the decision. So while it will be an administrative decision that's made, there is still an appeal process, and that appeal would go straight to the city council.
And then if, then if that doesn't work, can they go to the council?
Right, the appeal will go to the city council directly.
Because here's the other thing. While you're gutting this, you really haven't spelled out what the new process will be.
Right, this will be presented to the city council if the Planning Commission chooses to approve this draft ordinance. It will be presented to the city council so that they can make their determination on the same night that the initial public hearing will be presented. So they will not pass this unless they are looking toward moving forward on the other ordinance. They will want to make sure that there is something in place governing entertainment before anything becomes final.
See, I can't, we don't know what's gonna happen. I can't, I can't vote for taking, for gutting this old one unless we know what the new one is. And I am not in favor of placing this decision in the hands of one individual. We have gone from, you know, appointed people down to one person. That doesn't, knowing how the people in this city, particularly, you know, in Old Town, have, have some serious concerns, I have a real problem of taking that away from the people.
I tend to agree with you, Patty, but I'm not sure we're doing that. Um, the, the council has directed that this process go forward. What we vote on tonight will not go into effect unless it's replaced, as you know, reading this package. Will not go into effect unless the new procedure, the new ordinance, is approved.
But we don't even know what that new procedure is, though.
You're right.
And that's why I have a problem right there. They need to give, we've only got half of the equation. I want to see the other half.
I agree. It's, it's somewhat of a blank check that we're giving staff. But, but it's up to the council, not, not the commission, to handle this matter and to approve it, not us.
It's really within their jurisdiction.
It is within their jurisdiction, but they also rely on us to vet out all the problems.
Well, I think that you're doing that with the comments that will be in the minutes that will provide a guideline for them. But, but if we don't do this, and then they go ahead and attempt to adopt the new program, it's just gonna slow everything down because then it'll have to come back to us again for this part of it.
Maybe it needs to come back to us.
Perhaps, um, I don't know how you're gonna vote, but perhaps as part of your discussion, if you have, um, a consensus or comments on what you would like to see the new ordinance contain, if it's not gonna, if it's not something that is gonna be handled by the Planning Commission anymore? Because typically, um, historically, it's been part of your CUP process. And so that, essentially, what you have now is you have a staff analysis, and then it comes to you, you have a public hearing, a full public hearing, and then if that's appealed, it goes to city council. So what is being eliminated is a theoretically more streamlined process in terms of at least timing at a staff level with notification to people, as Crystal said, within 500 feet, and a process for them to give input. And then if somebody is dissatisfied, either the applicant or the nearby folks, they can appeal to the city council. And the way this was drafted was to recommend that they not, as, um, one of you said, that it would not go into effect until, that, that this would not be effective unless and until the city council actually does adopt something else. Um, so that you're not leaving entertainment completely unregulated, which I don't think is the intent. So perhaps what you could talk about is if, if the sense is that the council is going more toward having a staff person make the initial approval or disapproval, and then an appeal to them directly, what are the kinds of things that you would like to see? Would you like to see the same sorts of requirements and conditions that are imposed now? Because your current section, the, the part of the code that is proposed to be eliminated, has a list of factors and standards that the applicant has to meet and that can be imposed. imposed. If you would like those to continue, I think this is your opportunity to say as part of your recommendation, this is what we want to see so that we know from the planning perspective, these concerns will be met.
Okay, two comments on that. One, if you want to streamline, get rid of the planning commission and just go to one person, okay? Two, unless I see what the other side of the coin is, I can't support this. I, I feel we have a responsibility to the residents to maintain the democratic process. And unless you can tell me what the new process is, I cannot support gutting the old. Sorry.
But the new process will not be adopted unless the council approves it.
Well, they've got to approve it, but at least they've got to let us know what it is.
Well, we can, we have a voice in that process with the council, as private citizens anyway.
Well, I'm not, not yet, I know, but that's, what about from the planning commission? What I'm saying is.
All we're doing here is clearing the way, greasing, greasing the skids so that this, this new ordinance can be put in place and won't, there won't be any conflicts with the existing zoning ordinance, because that will be gutted. But it doesn't happen unless the new, the new ordinance is approved, right, by the council?
No, but they should be able to tell us what the new process will be. That's what they're not telling us.
She will have to tell the council.
Well, I know.
Okay, well, there will be a public hearing on it and you can voice your concerns there, obviously.
Well, I, where I'm coming from is, I can't support gutting the old unless I know what the new is. That's where I'm coming from.
But that's outside our realm of responsibility.
Not really. I think, Esther, I'm sorry, but you're asking us to give up protection for the residents? We are basically going to give this up to let one, a staff person do it, probably Jim, do, make a decision.
That's what the council is going to decide, yes.
Yeah, that's what, they can do that. I'm just registering that I don't agree with that.
Well, they may not agree with it either, and until they vote on it.
So I'm just saying, the way it is now, I cannot support this because it takes away from the residents this level of, of redress. They come to the planning commission for, you know, for, for this, for it's part of the CUP process, and that's being taken away from them. Then they're going to have to go to a meeting? Is that televised? They going to understand it? I don't think so.
Well, that, that's for the council to decide, though.
All right, but I'm just saying.
Not the commission.
I know.
And we're not taking anything away.
Oh, yes, we are.
This stays in, stays in place until the new, the new ordinance replaces it.
Okay, and when the new ordinance replaces it, their ability to come to us for such decisions doesn't exist anymore.
That's right, and that's what the council will decide.
Okay.
And the council has every right to.
Okay, yes, they have the right.
I passed the planning commission in that process, right?
They can do that, I'm just saying I don't agree with it. Like I said, you could streamline it and put everything in the hands of them and just do away with us.
To be perfectly honest, Patty, I, I agree with you. I would like to see that blank check, too. I would like to see the draft of that ordinance as well.
Mr. Chair, I may interject just a little bit.
Let me finish my statement. We're not obligated to do that, though. We do not, we're not, that is not our role. Go ahead.
The planning commission, what you are charged with is with reviewing applications and land use items as it relates to Title 11, the, specifically the zoning code. What staff was directed to do by city council at their May 11th meeting was to create an administrative process that would not be put into Title 11. Because it's not going into Title 11, if we wanted to, we could not present that new ordinance to you. It has to be presented to the city council, which is why it wasn't attached as part of this staff report when it was sent out as part of the agenda. As residents, you do have every right to speak to the council and to voice your opinions on what the new procedure is going to be. As planning commissioners, the only basis for your decisions is what is in Title 11. And I understand the concern with voting to remove something and then not having a failsafe in case something else doesn't occur. Section two in the draft ordinance does specifically state that the ordinance shall not become effective until the effective date of an ordinance amending, I believe it's going into Title V, hopefully I'm not misspeaking on that, of the Seal Beach Municipal Code to incorporate an administrative process to regulate incidental entertainment activities carried out as part of a primary business activity. So this is completely null and void until such time that the city council does approve an administrative process, however they believe is best for the city and the residents. It is being presented to the city council at the September 28th meeting. At that, when the agenda for that meeting is prepared and complete, it will be released to the public and there will be a public hearing. Any ordinance has to be presented to the council at least twice, the very first public hearing and then the second reading. If at the public hearing, the council receives comment or direction or they feel they want to change their directive to staff, it can be amended at that time. As the city attorney mentioned, if you want to further provide recommendations to the city council, we can do that on behalf of the planning commission. But we need tonight to be able to make a decision on Title 11, not on other portions that the planning commission does not have jurisdiction over.
The other comment I would like to make is, you mentioned in May this came, sometime before that is when we first discovered that this was a problem for one of our businesses in our community. I would really not want to put a roadblock in this process to slow it down anymore because I think the merchants in this town are very interested in the outcome of this and will be part of the process that helps create this new set of regulations. And I feel that we need to do our part in passing this tonight so that it can move to, ahead efficiently and get it in place as soon as possible for our merchants.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that. When is, when is the draft of the new ordinance going to be available for the public to review? Is that the 28th of September?
The, the agenda packet for the 28th meeting will be available no later than 5:00 PM on September 25th.
So on 20, on the 25th?
Yes.
So we as, as solitary individual residents can review that package on the 25th and get our comments into staff at that time?
Yes.
And that's come to the meeting.
As well as the 10th meeting on the 28th. If possible, influence, influence the ordinance, a request of the ordinance be modified on the 25th, 26th, 27th.
I think that's the point where Patty's historic comments on how it's been handled in the past and her concerns about that would be most effective. I think this, blocking it at this point, which essentially will happen if you vote no, since it's only three councilperson.
The, the ordinance has to be removed from the zoning section in order for this to proceed. You all agree with that?
I understand that. I guess what concerns me is what we're going to end up with.
I agree.
Because they want to gut this, they want to move to something else that, we don't know what it is, they haven't showed it to us yet, and they're going to take a process away from the people and put it in the hands of one person, and that's what I have a problem with.
But that is the prerogative of the council.
Well, then, go ahead and do it.
If they elect to do that, they can do that.
They can go right ahead and do that, but I'm just want to go on record that I don't support that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it either, but the city council has directed that this, that they, this new process be implemented.
Let them do it.
Okay? And as part of that process, the zoning amendment has to be amended, the zoning, the zoning ordinance.
I understand that, but they're not giving us, they're not giving us all of the information.
Agreed. It's the first step in the process.
And that's why I can't support this, unless they give us the information. I want to know, because I don't support this decision ending up in the hands of one person.
No, this decision is going to end up in the council's.
Oh, I know, but it's going to end up with, what they're going to do is, it's going to become an administrative decision. This amplified music is going to end up being an administrative decision on one person.
I'm not sure the council will, will go along with that. That may be staff's recommendation, but I'm not sure the council will agree with that.
I'm telling you, I can't support that right now.
And I don't, I'm not sure the members of the council will be able to either.
Well, then let's, but this isn't the venue to make that decision.
Exactly, exactly. We have to go, we have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to eliminate this zoning amendment, this, you have the zoning amendment in order to proceed.
Well, if you have a two-to-one vote, then you don't have the majority and it'll end up at council anyway.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I was suggesting that you can, as part of whatever your decision is, state your consensus or your concerns. I mean, obviously, I am not familiar with the history like Commissioner Campbell is or any of you are about what the, the problems, concerns, good procedures, bad procedures. I don't know all that history, but if you have concerns that you feel the new ordinance should be addressing, I would really encourage you to convey that formally as a commission. And I mean, I'm understanding what everybody's saying. The bottom line will be, if the city council decides to move that process out of the CUP process and into another part of the code, the zoning code provisions will have to be eliminated because they, they won't fit anymore. That won't be the process, so.
And, and that's why I would like to encourage you to eliminate this. I, I agree with, with what you're saying. You know, we're giving, we're giving the council and the staff this, this body here.
They can take it anyway.
And they, and they're, but they're, that's their job.
Well, then that, then let them, then let them.
It's not ours.
I'm just saying, I can't support this the way it is because the basic thing is, we're going from the planning commission reviewing amplified music, which is what this is all about, and it comes under the zone, the zoning code. And we're, we're being asked to vacate that responsibility ultimately and turn it over to a staff person. And I'm just saying, that's it in a nutshell. And what I'm saying is, I can't support that.
Is that, is that true? I'm not sure that is necessarily true.
That's what it says here.
Staff and council may be, may both recommend that, that the approval process pass through this body.
But that's where it's, that's what they're, that's, this is how they want to do it. They want us to vacate that ordinance so that they can go ahead and do that. That's what it says.
And if, and if the council agrees with that, so be it.
Well, that's fine, but I'm like, I.
But the council may object to that, and they may say it still has to pass.
They may say that the, the planning commission approved it.
Okay, let's get back to the.
Until we, excuse me, until we see the draft, until we see the draft, I'm not sure we, we know whether there's an issue here or not.
Well, that's what it says here, it's going to, that's what, to, the entertainment permit can be evaluated more efficiently at the administrative level than through the zoning process. They're going to put it in the hands of one person.
But there'll be checks and balances.
That's what's not spelled out here.
I'd like to speak up on behalf of the merchants of this town who have been waiting very patiently to have us move ahead with this so they can get on with their lives and get their businesses back in order. And I'd hate to see us slow this process down. It won't really slow it down because, as she said, if we don't pass this, the city council will just pass it.
Override, yes.
Well, the only. So it makes us look like we're not doing our job.
Now, the only people that are having a problem are those businesses that have amplified music, which would basically be a couple of the bars on Main Street.
I don't think that's a fair assumption.
And we know Taquasurf is, is a vital interest in this issue.
But then, I understand Bogarts is interested in having a string quartet. I mean, there's several businesses that could see this change as a way of enhancing their businesses, and I think that's a really important thing for us to think about. Business is the heart of this community, and if we don't keep it thriving.
Patty, this also says that this, this process will, and I'm not sure if it's up to one person or a committee or, or will require our approval or council's approval, but this process will also improve revocation issues, code enforcement issues and police concerns.
Again, they have it in one person.
Maybe, maybe not.
We don't know that.
We don't know that.
And there's going to be ways for people to challenge any decision, just as there are now.
See, that's what bothers me. We don't have the other half of the equation. We're being asked to vacate this, and they're not telling us exactly what they're going to do.
But we'll have an opportunity to participate in that decision as citizens, and also, if you choose to ask that your series of questions be included as part of our minutes and passed forward to the city, that's a way that we can move this along, but yet pass your concerns along with it.
Well, if I vote no, it'll go back to, to the city and then they will decide amongst themselves. They can do what they want.
Not the city, the council.
The council.
Council, I mean, the council.
The council will just do this for us.
They'll just do what they want.
And then we won't have done our job.
Sorry, I, I.
If, if this is not approved tonight, the council has the prerogative of approving it, overriding our decision, so.
And that's, I guess what I was encouraging was, if you have concerns, it seems to me it would be important to articulate those in whatever action you take.
The trouble is.
Formally, because your next meeting will be after that council meeting, if in fact that's when it goes.
The problem is we're, we're speculating on our concerns. There's no draft that we can look at and pick apart.
Well, but I've heard you, I've heard all of you identify the concern about amplified music. I've heard all of you talk about the concern that neighbors be notified. I've heard comments about a process to revoke. I mean, those are the things I'm hearing, which if those are your concerns, you know, how are people going to get notified? Will there be enough time for them to participate in the process? That's what I'm encouraging you to come up with a list and say to council, these are the concerns we feel need to be addressed based on our expertise and experience with these issues.
And that's whether you vote in favor or not.
Yes, we can do that either way.
Correct, that's right.
How would you feel about that, Patty? We, we put a list together of our concerns and include that with our vote.
Only if our vote is contingent on that, because I will tell you, my own experience, remember, I've been working for the city since 1993, okay? I've seen what happens, and your list can get buried someplace. The only thing they understand is when you vote. I hate to say it, but that's it.
What I was suggesting was that your formal action incorporate your comments, and whether we call it a list or we call it, you know, you can have a, if, if you all voted in favor, you could have a, as part of your resolution would be a vote to recommend that this be superseded. No, I, I, let, let me just finish, because I understand what you're saying and I understand your concern. What I'm trying to do is make sure your concerns are communicated to the city council. And if you feel as a planning commission that these issues are better handled at this commission than at a, a staff level, then that may be your decision. If you feel there's a split and some of you think that with proper parameters, a staff person can make the kinds of decisions that need to be made, then your vote, I would encourage you that your vote should reflect that. But what I'm suggesting is, the formal resolution you adopt, you put in that because that is your vote. And I, if you mean the vote is yes or no, then I'm obviously not talking about that. I'm talking about a formal resolution that says, this is what we're recommending, yea or nay, or we couldn't get three votes, here are our concerns, and that's in the body of the resolution.
But essentially, you're asking us to draft this new ordinance?
No, I'm asking you to communicate to council what you feel needs to be addressed, and if you feel, as I said, that it's better handled here, then that's part of your recommendation to them in, in not voting in favor of this.
How do you two feel about this? You want to put together a, a resolution, a list of items that we are, that summarize our concerns regarding this matter? So the council can formally address it?
A resolution listing our concerns, I, is something I could entertain, because to me, if we vote the way this is, bottom line, it goes to council. Because to me, if we vote the way this is, bottom line, it goes to council, the planning commission approved it. And that's not where I'm at. I have some serious concerns and these need to be answered before I can support this.
Do you have those listed there? Those concerns? You?
My concerns are, have involved a notification of the residents.
She hasn't. You want to share that, uh, you meant?
Well, it says, how will the residents around the area in question be notified? Will they even be notified?
That was answered, I believe. That was answered though.
Okay. Uh, it's still a five hundred foot limit. But now, here's the thing. If they have an issue, they go to a committee, not to an open public hearing that's televised. Because, and that's important because there are people who can't get down here who watch these things.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Patty, can you just talk into the microphone so we can...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, it, it is important. You said that if they have a problem, they go to a committee meeting or something. That would not be televised. These hearings are televised. And this is very, very important because there are people at home that watch these things. I will tell you this, I have been to meetings where we're discussing something and all of a sudden, somebody comes flying in the door, half dressed, you know, very upset about an issue. And, you know, and they want to address it right then and there. That's pretty much the people in Old Town, the Hill that do that. Leisure World and College Park East and West don't come flying down here where something's bothering them. But then probably ninety percent of the business of this commission is Old Town because everything here is legally non-conforming. You don't really find the issues up in College Park East and West. And that's why I was even surprised tonight to see this one home on the Hill because, um, all our homes are legally conforming. So if somebody wants to do a remodel, just come down here and pull a permit. But, um, no, this becomes, this is serious. Um, this has been an issue that, honest to gosh, you, you, you come across this every year.
So you're recommending that the adjudication process be, be held in an open forum?
Yeah.
Possibly in front of us or, or in front, in front of the council or?
Yeah, if somebody had, had to redress an issue because something happened, you know, I hate to say it, but typically, you know, you post the agenda. How many people read, come down here and read it? Well, now they can get it online. But even at that, this is a really big thing. And how many people are here tonight on it? Nobody. And yet, what typically happens is, then we approve something and then it moves on to council and it's in the newspaper, if it makes a newspaper. And then all of a sudden, word starts getting around and people come in and they're very, very upset. Why wasn't I told? Well, you know, you can't notify everybody, but now everything is online. And you'd like to think that people care if they find out. Well, everybody cares. The only way I found out about it was it was in my packet.
Patty, you, you agree. You know, I don't, I don't think I disagree with you on the major points here. Except for the fact that, that what we're voting on tonight is to eliminate, to gut the zoning amendment, the ordinance, zoning ordinance, so that there are no conflicts in the future if, if and when, and, and maybe it'll never happen, if and when a new ordinance is, is, is accepted by the council.
I understand that.
That's all we're doing.
I know.
If, if no new ordinance is accepted, this stays in place?
I know, but I want to see the new ordinance before I vote on this, cutting this one.
This will wait until the new one's in place and you have ample opportunity to influence them about the new one.
But that's, that doesn't work for me, Esther. I'm sorry. It just doesn't.
Well, it, it sounds like we're not going to get, get a, get a positive vote on this tonight.
Because it's, it's going to be more efficient. Ha, well, easy. It's going to be in the hands of one person. Um...
Well, let's do this. Let's, let's take, what do you think about this? Let's take a vote on this now and depending on how the vote turns out, as a matter of fact, no matter how the vote turns out, we will prepare a, a list of issues and include that in the, in the minutes of this meeting for the council and staff to, to consider.
Or you can, if, if you don't get three votes for the resolution that's in your packet, assuming that's, somebody's going to make that motion and you get a second, then you could have somebody make a different motion and, I don't know, maybe we can take a ten minute break and one of these folks can go draft up a quick resolution and include whatever else you want to put in that. As I said, if you do it as a resolution as opposed to even minutes, it's a more, it's a formal action. And to the extent you're concerned that it's going to get ignored or forgotten, that may be viewed more seriously.
If we take a break and discuss it, that's a violation of the Brown Act.
I don't mean you discuss it. I mean, you give direction to staff, you take a break, you leave the public here, actually, postpone the public hearing.
On their own?
She goes back and drafts the resolution and we come back and you look at the resolution and if it says what you want it to say, then you make, you vote on that.
Can we take your list of questions and give it to Crystal and, and just use that as a draft resolution?
This, this was my starting point because, um, what I just, what I wrote down and looking at it, I said, this new ordinance will repeal the old ordinance in favor of a new ordinance that we don't have, that we don't know what it is. And that's where I have a problem. You're asking me to vote, we understand that, just away with this, but we don't even know what we're doing. Except that we do know we're going to streamline the process and make it an administrative decision, which means it's probably in the hands of one person. And then we're going to have, the, the redress procedure would be to go before a committee. And, um, I just feel that we have taken one step out of the democratic process for our residents.
Can I just clarify something? That, conceptually, I, the idea at this point is to have it done administratively and then go to council, not a committee. I'm not sure where...
Well, the committee is if they have a problem with it.
No, no, that's not, no.
How does somebody redress an issue?
Then they appeal to council.
Okay.
To the city council. So it just shifts it from the planning commission to the council, which has more visibility really and people pay attention to more. And it just, just as a comment and not speaking to the merits, this is not an uncommon process. A lot of cities like Seal Beach have this issue addressed through a permit, a, a land use permit, through the zoning ordinance. It goes to the planning commission with an appeal to the city council. Sometimes it's even done with a zoning administrator or something like that and then appealed to planning commission and city council. Other cities, as is being proposed now, it never goes to the planning commission. It's outside of the planning process and instead it's handled as a business regulatory permit. And that's what the proposal is. There are a number of cities that do it that way as opposed to doing it as a land use permit. It's a business regulatory permit. Which logically seems to me to make more sense. And that's your policy decision.
Unless it's in the hands of one entertainment czar, like Patty says, with no, no recourse.
But that, that won't happen.
And I, I can't believe that something would pass, the city, our city council would accept something like that.
Well, that's why I've thrown my ideas out here and if, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is where I'm coming from. And if the city council wants to override it, that's their choice. They'll deal with the people out here. But, uh, I'm, I'm just not willing to take away that one level of, uh, democracy for our residents.
Okay.
We're not like every other city.
And I don't think the council wouldn't either. But I, I can't speak for the council.
I'm ready to move ahead here.
Okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number fifteen twenty-two, recommending approval of Zone Text Amendment fifteen dash one.
I second. Please vote. The vote is two in favor, one against. The motion is denied. And, um, where do we go from here, Ms. Attorney?
Well, is there, do one of you want to make another motion? Or, um, the report, you can leave it as is if you, either somebody doesn't have a motion or...
I, I would like to move that we, that we attach with our results here tonight, with our vote here tonight, a, a list of issues, concerns for the council, for the, both staff and council to address in the, in the, uh, makeup of this new ordinance, in the development of the new ordinance. Do I have a second on that?
Sir, is that again, repeat the question?
I would like to attach a, a, a list of issues and a list of issues for the staff and the council to consider in drafting the new ordinance.
That's fine.
Is that a second?
Appropriate.
Sure. Because that's, but that doesn't nullify the vote, first vote that we took.
No, it does not.
This is just, we're going to let you know what's going on. We have a motion.
And do you, as part of the motion, would you, do you want to propose some items for that list now? Or how would you like to handle it?
You could do that.
Um...
You can reach consensus and then...
It would not be a complete list, would it?
What's your...
It would not be a complete list tonight. We're not going to stay here till midnight developing a list, all right?
My, my major issues.
So just the list of these major issues?
You could say these are issues we have identified, but subject to our opportunity to see the draft ordinance and comment further.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Do we?
Hasn't been seconded yet.
Is it, is that all right with?
To attach. It doesn't nullify the first vote we took.
It, it does not.
It just attaches our list of concerns.
That's right.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I go for that.
And if you want to have somebody make that...
Is that a second?
Would you like to second?
I'll second that. All right?
Please vote.
If I say yes, do I have to write the list?
The vote is, the vote is three in favor and the motion passes. We will, we will attach a list of concerns for staff and council to consider.
And now you need to come up with the list.
The list. Uh, questions regarding notification of the residents within five hundred feet? That's got to be in it.
Who, excuse me. Uh, Tina, are you taking these notes or?
We all are.
Or Crystal? Because I'm certainly not.
Okay. So we're talking notification of the residents within five hundred feet. That has to stand. Um, there any, make sure there's no timeframe in the notification with this new streamlined process.
You want a timeframe, you want a period of time?
The timeframe that exists now, you know, when they notify the residents, they have so many days, whatever, before it comes to the city. There, there, there should, that same timeframe should be in existence. Um, most important thing is, what will the new administrative process be?
Commissioner Campbell, can you speak into your microphone, please?
Am I not talking into this thing?
No.
Okay. What will the new administrative process be? Who will be administering this new process? Um, I have a concern that we have taken one level of democracy away from the residents. Um, what will their avenue of redress be? And the notifications. Right now, when somebody comes before this body, it's televised and they can see it at home. With this new process, that step will be, that will be eliminated. And I have a real concern about that because we are taking, viewing of the democratic process away from our residents. If this is an issue that drags people down here with blood in their eye, we have no business taking it out of the hands of the planning commission.
So you would like to see a public hearing?
Yes.
For approving and denying requests?
Yes. I would like to see...
Is, is, is your concern the, whether it's televised or not?
That's one of my concerns, yes. Because as I said, I have sat here at meetings and I have watched people come flying in that door, sometimes half dressed. You know, they threw their shoes on and that was about it. And, uh, they come flying down here because something has so enraged them. And, and I said, the frustrating thing of it all is, you post the agenda and now it's even online, but people don't, don't read it. And what happens is, they pick up the sun and there it is on the front page. Well, nobody told me. You know, I can't make you read this.
That's right. You led a horse to water.
You know, and that's the frustrating thing. We cannot make them read it. But in the meantime, now they're into the appeal process because something's been approved that. They feel that had they been here, they could have made their case.
Can, can you read back what we have on the list so far?
So far, the items that we have are notification of residents within five hundred feet. Ten day notification must be provided for all applications. Clarify what the process will be. Clarify who will conduct this process. There's a concern that a level of the democratic process is being removed. Um, what will the level of redress be? And viewing of the democratic process should be provided, i.e., it should be televised.
Okay. I guess my, my bottom line is, I don't think this decision should be in the hands of a entertainment czar. I think it still should be, it should come before a body such as this where the people can come and have their concerns aired.
Well, you can certainly make those recommendations at the meeting on the twenty-eighth throughout September, right, to the council?
I don't know that I can come to that meeting.
Okay.
And that's, see, then that's a concern. Um, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, like I said earlier, hey, you want to streamline everything, get away with, do away with the planning commission and put everything in the hands of one person. That's really streamlining.
Patty, is there anything else you would like to add to this list that Tina read off?
Commissioner Campbell, we would also be, uh, very open to accepting concerns you have in writing prior to the twenty-eighth meeting for inclusion to the city council, if you're unable to attend.
Okay. I, my, one of my wrap up things here was, it seems like we're basically cutting the existing ordinance and turning the function over to a staff person. If I lived in a home that was backed up to Main Street businesses, I'd be very concerned that my right to price to be notified and access to a public hearing were being taken away. My concerns are not with the volume of work with the planning commission, but protection of the residents.
I think we, we got that with the notification of, of residents within five hundred feet. Did we not? Or?
Well, you know what happens then too? The residents within five hundred feet get notified. Nobody else gets notified and they see it in the newspaper and they come down and they scream and yell. It comes right back to, you can't make people read. But in this case, we're taking a level of protection away from them.
Yes. Commissioner Cummings?
I would just like to add though, that my support for the effort being made by the city council to try to streamline this process so that our business people can move ahead with changes they might like to have in their businesses in a more efficient way. Because we've seen the frustration from our business community over these issues and I would like to, I support the efforts being made here to, um, make that easier for our merchants.
You know, there's a, a litany of, of issues that I, I have, but I, I can't, you know, the, the... If there is, if there is a entertainment czar, one person of staff who makes these decisions, is there a liability that the, the city incurs with, with that? Um, there could be conflicts of interest. There could be all sorts of things going on there. But I, I would, I would hope the council would consider all of these things in their final acceptance of a ordinance. Anything else wishing to add to this?
No, you brought up a very good point there, very good point there at the end, which I think is important. It's, uh, anytime you take a decision away from a decision-making body and put it in the hands of one person, you run into a problem. Here's a kick in the head, Steve. It's not even my district that has all these problems.
Well, it's a citywide.
And, and, well, I know it's citywide, but let's face it, easily ninety percent of the issues that come before... come before us are Old Town. Because, as I said, everything here is legally non-conforming. You just don't find these issues outside of Old Town.
Well, you're part of, you're part of Old Town, even though you don't live here.
There is one.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to do before we wrap this up?
Three, three, four.
Oh, we can move on then?
As far as I'm concerned. I'm sorry, Esther.
Is there, are you satisfied, Amy, with what we've done here?
So that your consensus is you want that list of items conveyed?
Conveyed to both staff and to the council, yes.
You could also add that I am not comfortable with putting that decision in the hands of one person. What we gain in streamlining, we're gonna lose in democracy.
We can add Patty Campbell's phone number to this list.
Hey, you can believe the phone calls I've been getting, say, already on another issue.
All right. We will close out this issue then and move on to the director's report. Is there any, any report from the director's chair tonight?
Good evening. I just wanted to inform the board that the director, Jim Bashan, is not here tonight because he is attending a coastal commission meeting tomorrow in Eureka, so he had a full day of traveling today to get there.
Boy, the temperatures are up on me, 68 degrees.
Oh, I feel so sorry for him with our heat today. And that's all for the director's report.
Okay. How about the commissioners? Commissioner Campbell, do you have any comments or...
No, I think I just got it up tonight. Fresh and Easy has left our community, unfortunately. Sad to see them go. Has there been any inquiries as to possible other uses for that piece of property?
We have not been approached, received phone calls or any inquiries at all about any business looking at that property.
And what's the status of the property that's being developed at Main and PCH? Last time they were sort of preparing the ground, they said the plans were in with the planning department. Is that still where that is?
That is correct. They are much closer than they were. So they are still doing the grading on the property. My understanding, I actually spoke to the building official about it earlier today and he was saying maybe by beginning, middle of next week, they might be ready to come in and pull permits for that property.
Right. I'd like to see that moving.
Do you have any idea what's in the, in the works?
For that property. It's a two-story commercial building, retail on the first floor, offices on the second floor. And it'll be sort of an L-shaped building with parking on site behind it.
There will be space?
Very good.
I'm sorry?
This is on the, next to the Bay Theater.
Oh, okay.
PCH and E. Lot, okay.
And Cosmic Subs is open?
Yes.
And they serve delicious, maybe I can't say that, delicious sandwiches?
Also, I drove through the industrial park over by Boeing to kind of assess the impact of the new sports center. And one really noticeable impact is that all the local businesses on the weekend have set up barricades to keep all the extra cars from coming onto their property. So that was one of the concerns of the folks there and they've taken steps to make sure that doesn't happen. And it's a lively place on the weekend. Lots of cars here.
Have we had any police reports or issues concerning parking and...
We have not had any complaints or even inquiries about any of the activity out there, or this is the first time that we hear how busy it is out there on the weekends.
And how about glory days, just out of curiosity? There was a lot of concern about noise from glory days. Is there any complaints there?
We have not had any complaints about noise from glory days and especially in the summer, they've been keeping their roll-up windows open and we haven't had any complaints coming in.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is scheduled for, for when?
We don't have any items.
September 21st. No items are presently scheduled, but possibly a meeting at 7:00 PM on September 21st. Stand by. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Steve.